And stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, and to the wisdom of liberty and justice for all. All right, so Madam Secretary, you do the roll call, please.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Don Anderson. Peter Hansel. Roberto Sais.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. And proof of publication, please.
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 16, 2022, April 20, 2022, May 4, 2022, or by affidavit of site postings and certified mailings.
All right, thank you. Do we have minutes to approve?
Yeah, we do have minutes from the April 21 meeting. One very minor just note correction, I think it's just a typo in the minutes on page seven of 18, fourth paragraph, second to last line in the paragraph, it mentions, it says they could not decrease the runoff to the well, I think that should be wetland, just a minor change, if somebody could just note that, and then I'll move approval with that revision.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the amendments as amended, and we have a second, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And a like sign? Okay, motion carries. So I'd like to welcome everybody and tell you that we're the Planning Commission, we're appointed by the County Commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezoning, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it'd be important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. Those of you who are not familiar with the format of our meetings, they are as follows: We have three sections, we have continuances, and occasionally we get requests from the staff or the applicant for a continuance, and it's our custom to grant those requests unless there are extenuating circumstances, and we also have consent agenda items, items that are on consent, that we have not had any objections to from the public or the staff. We'll go through those one at a time, if there's anything on consent that someone, one in the audience wants to hear, please raise your hand, and we'll pull it off consent for discussion, and it'll go on to the regular items. Those are the items that we'll fully vet during this meeting. So the applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation, and the questioners will have three minutes to come up and state their concerns, and following the presentation, then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and respond to those concerns. If there's any requests in writing at least 24 hours prior to this meeting for additional time, it may be granted, and I believe we do have one or two, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Chair, you do have one request for 15 minutes' time that you have granted, which is on item PC 5.
All right, thank you. And so this is an opportunity for any of us who have cell phones, which is most of us, including me, to put them on the silent position, so we don't interrupt anybody that might be speaking. And before we start the regular meeting, we're opening the meeting for public comment for any items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who is here to speak on something not on the agenda? If not, then if anybody who plans to give testimony today would stand and raise their right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth to help you, God? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we can begin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. First item is PDD 220188, which is an appeal, and it was advertised as a continuance item. This is a request to continue to the September 22, 2022, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
All right, is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Anyone here to object? Any objections?
And to clarify, we don't have anyone to speak, signed up to speak on WebEx on the matter.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Following item is PC 3, it's PDD 227592, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Hillcrest MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, MMLJ Holdings LLC, and Christina H. De Lorenzo. This is a rezoning request from an AC Agricultural District and an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of a maximum of 1,800 single-family detached dwelling units, 600 single-family townhomes, 450,000 square feet of retail, and 200,000 square feet of light industrial office on approximately 740.2 acres. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, this is a consent agenda item, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
And for the record, we don't have anyone signed up on WebEx to object to the item.
All right, thank you.
Following item is PC 4, PDD 227620, this is a county-initiated zoning amendment. The name of the owner is One Lakouchi Center, WREC Property EDC Project. It's for a change in zoning from an R4 high-density residential district to an I1 light industrial park district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, is the applicant present?
It's the county.
It's the county.
All right, then they're present.
Yes.
Is anyone here to object?
And for the record, we don't have anyone signed up on WebEx to speak on the item.
All right, thank you.
The following item is going to be polled from consent, which is PC 5, PDD 227585. You did receive a letter of objection, and we do have some folks here in, to speak to the item.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll move on to PC 6. PC 6 is PDD 227565, is a zoning amendment in the name of Faircloth MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Faircloth Parker LLC and others. It's a rezoning request from an AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow the development of a maximum of 380 single-family detached and attached residential units on approximately 187.5 acres, comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
And for the record, we have no one signed up to speak on the matter on WebEx.
All right, thank you.
Following item is PC 7, that is PDD 227618, zoning amendment in the name of I-75 Logistics Center MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development. It's formerly known as Pasco Commerce Center MPUD, GC Pasco Owner LLC and John Lewis Grossenbacher Trust, substantial modification to allow the inclusion of approximately 56.17 additional acres and increase the maximum entitlements to 1.9 million square feet on approximately 224.57 acres, comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Denise, can you just do me a favor when that goes to the board? Could you change the title to say 1,900,000, 1,900,000 square feet of industrial, so it's clear what we're approving?
Noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you have a question on this one? If we could, if we could pull it?
Okay.
Okay, following is PC 8, PDD 227610, zoning amendment in the name of Geiger Ranch LLC is for a change in zoning from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District, formerly known as Saran Ranch, to AR Agricultural Residential District. It's for a portion of the property totaling 9.61 acres, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
And for the record, we have no one signed up on WebEx to speak on that matter.
Okay.
The following item, as far as I know, is going to be polled as well, it's PC 9, PDD 227595. We do have someone who has signed up to speak on the matter.
Okay, so PC 9 will be polled?
Yes. And then we're going to go into the addendum, APC 10. This is a variance request, PDD 222097, in the name of Michael Rappaport, 7005 Francis Drive. It's for a reduction in the front yard setback from 50 feet to 43 feet in an AR1 agricultural residential district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, is the applicant present?
And we don't have anyone signed up to speak on the matter on WebEx.
Denise, I just have one quick question on that.
Yes.
I don't know if it's for you or who it's for, but when these things get submitted to, we don't see these that often, but we, this is probably the second or third one I've seen on this board, I mean, something simple like this, would it be easy enough to have Building Construction Services have them at a table or something on the survey that shows like what's proposed and what's required, so it's an easier check and balance? I mean, this is, it's a simple oversight mistake, I get it, but if there's something easier to point it out, I mean, it might be worth talking about.
Yeah, I believe there's someone here from Building Construction Services, and that person is certainly listening to and hearing what you're saying.
Just a recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it looks like we've polled from the consent agenda, PC 5, PC 7, and PC 9.
Right. Okay, so do I hear a motion on consent?
I move for approval, PC 2, PC 3, PC 4, PC 6, PC 8.
I'm PC 10.
Okay.
Second.
You have a motion on the consent agenda, and a second, any further discussion?
It just doesn't include PC 2 though, right? That was already approved, that's a continuance?
Yeah, PC 2 is already approved.
Agreed.
Hold it again, just to make it.
That's okay. Oh, it's. No, no, everything but PC 2.
And if you want to reapprove PC 2, there's probably not a problem.
Okay, all right, so no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, it's Brad Tippin, Planning and Development, it may be best, I, Mr. Poole, you had a question on PC 7, did you just want to ask a question, maybe we could do that, get that out of the way?
Yeah, and I think it's easy enough to answer, so let me caveat my questions by saying that I'm super excited about this project, I think it's right what we want there, but I did talk to Mr. Hobby about it, and I didn't think to ask this question when, when we spoke about the project, when he was introducing it to me, which is, Mr. Hobby, you'd refer to the, the left-hand queuing lane that's turning into the, turning into, off of 52?
Right.
Into the development?
Right.
My concern, as I looked at it more, kind of studied the project, is, is the, the distance for stacking for trucks coming off of 75 northbound?
Right.
And trying to make that movement across three lanes of traffic to that lane?
Right.
How is that going to be?
Well, I have Steve Henry here, and he could probably answer that better than I. I know he's already met with DOT about it, and I think they've conditionally approved that, so.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, I believe the Flying J truck stop is right there as well.
Right, exactly.
So you already have some truck traffic coming off there?
Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. Mr. Hobby had said, we have met with DOT on numerous occasions on this, in working out the geometry, how that's going to work, we're also working with Flying J, because they do have a, a median opening within the left turn lane, so we're working with them and geometry to make all that work, but we believe that once, all the improvements that we're doing out there, that it'll function actually better than it is today.
Okay. I guess that's, so how, well, the trucks coming off of northbound 7552, are they still going to be able to get across there into that lane, coming across three lanes of traffic there?
Sure, I mean, the reality is that, you know, if there is, you know, they may have the stop, you know, so they'll have to wait for either on red, be able to turn, or they'll have a green light, and once they have a green light, then they can get across there without any conflict in traffic. So either way, but they would be able to do that, yes.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, it's, I guess my concern is that, you know, and understand the truck, truck traffic accessing Flying J now, but, you know, what's planned back there is a whole different animal, with truck traffic that's, that's coming in there, so I'm just concerned about kind of backing up onto 75 and any issues that, that might be there, so I just wanted to raise the, raise the issue.
Sure, and DOT is concerned with that too, and that's why we're, we're working with them on making sure as far as the queuing, the geometry at that intersection, we're proposing to put a signal there at 52 and Pasco Road, making sure that geometry works and how that all, all the queuing works.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, so can I hear a motion then?
I have a motion to approve, PC, this is.
7.
PC 7.
A second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Can I just clarify, that's what the correction to the title?
So, 7, Sonya, then, um.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's what the direction for staff to correct the title, to add the type of entitlements that were proven, which Denise said she would do.
Which are the industrial?
Yes, it will say 1.9 million square feet of industrial development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that being part of the motion, and we have a second, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Okay. All right.
So would you like to, I just have a question, do you want to do PC 5, or do you want to move to PC 9?
Well, which, which one's going to take the most time?
My prediction is PC 5.
Okay.
Will take more time.
Let's just do 9 and get that out of the way.
I believe Tammy Snyder should be on line for PC 9.
I am.
Was that your Tammy?
Yeah, that's me. Good afternoon, everybody, Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development Department, and this is PC 9.
Right.
Pulte Zona Law MPUD, PDD 227595. Sorry?
Right. Okay, so who pulled this one?
I have it.
There's somebody in the audience to speak to it.
All right, so whoever, who raised your hand?
Well, you probably should let the applicant say something if they want to.
Can I have Tammy finish her presentation?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, I just can't, it keeps cutting out, I think.
Okay, well, if it comes and grows.
All right, it's PDD 227595, this is the location of the request. The zoning district, the existing zoning district is AR Agricultural Residential, does have an MPUD to the west. Land use is rez 6. They propose a rezoning from AR Agricultural Residential to an MPUD to allow 130 single-family detached dwelling units and the associated infrastructure on approximately 75.65 acres. The applicant is requesting a few variations from the land development code, which include 901. D10 cul-de-sacs, it has a short plus or minus 60-foot roadway, which will serve no more than two lots, and a cul-de-sac would require a substantial amount of space, 901.2D driveway lane widths, as to, as a traffic calming measure, the applicant proposes an 11-foot wide driveline as opposed to a 12-foot wide as required for a type 1A street, and the same request for type 2 streets within the subdivision. This is the proposed master plan. The site is a parcel that is currently used for agricultural pursuits. The land development code specifies that variations from the LDC may be approved by the Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, during public hearing held on the application for the MPUD. Variations are specifically, should be specifically allowed where the BCC finds that the proposed variations meet or exceed the intent of the code. As stated previously, the applicant is seeking variations from the LDC, and the Planning and Development Department finds that, that it's reviewed the variation requests and found that they meet the intent. And the proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County Land Development Code, subsection 402.2 zoning amendments MPUD, and with the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, the Planning and Development Department recommends approval of the rezoning request, and we're here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Denise, and Tammy thanks you as well.
Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA, 109 North Breast Street, it had been sworn. Planning Commissioners, you'll recall that not so long ago, maybe six, seven months ago, we had another MPUD immediately to the north that was called Law MPUD. It was proposed by Pulte, the home builder, and Pulte has this site under contract. They're all part of the historic Law family property in Grove, that the Law family has owned in different entities and family members for many years, and at this point, this will be the third MPUD, basically as part of their original tract of land. They're all in the South Market area, they're all in the urban service area, they all have rez 6, and as we proposed on the one immediately to the north, the density we're proposing is considerably lower than rez 6, the net residential density is under 3, so we're not trying to max this out. Pulte builds a nice project, and they're going to have a nice project here that I think will be a credit to the area. Just a couple of other things about the project itself, and then some overall issues that residents may be concerned about. Number one, as I indicated, we have the project to the north, our intent is to join these together. The sites will be interconnected, as shown on the master plan. In addition to the interconnection shown on the master plan, there's a highway vision map road that's basically called an extension of Wilson Road, which is a road to the south, that we will be building to our southernmost access point, that will provide access to both of these sites up to Lake Patience Road. You may also recall during the previous MPUD that we provided additional right-of-way for the ultimate widening of Lake Patience Road, so there's sufficient right-of-way to make that happen if the county ultimately goes that route. One thing that we have heard from neighbors over time is they're concerned about getting out on 41, and for many years, DOT was against having a signal at Lake Patience and 41, but we understand that that has changed, and as part of this MPUD, my client is paying a proportionate or fair share towards the signalization, even though it's probably a quarter or half mile away from the site. So those are all good things, and again, I think the project fits in very well with the neighborhood, and if you just simply look at the MPUD master plan, the wetlands on either side frame the, the site in such a way that we really don't have any neighbors for about 200 or 300 feet minimal from where the development activity will be. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, or I'll wait for our neighbors to raise whatever questions they have, and then we'll answer them at that time, we have our full team here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobby. All right, so is there anybody on WebEx for this, Denise?
We do not have anyone on WebEx for this item.
So is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Could you just come forward and state your name and address, please? And just speak right into that microphone.
Betsy Law Lamoy, 3150 Wilson Road, Land O' Lakes, 34638. Several of my family members and I live on property directly south of this parcel being reviewed. I can't say that I'm really for it being developed, but I understand these things happen. My concern, our concern, is about a driveway, a road that provides access to our family property that has been in our family for 75, greater than 75 years. This small driveway that comes off of Purdue Road, it may be part of this 80-foot future vision road. I understand, I've been told Sharon Law will retain ownership of this small road. It provides access to our property, it continues past her house to our property line, which is, which is on the south side of the review property. It has been regularly used for 75, over 75 years to access the property. It's also a part of the historic, what was historic Grove, Law Grove, as Mr. Hobby mentioned. We have, we use it regularly. Also, Duke Energy's power line has, comes down this road and comes to our homestead, and so to provide power to that house there, which is a residence, that road needs to remain accessible and intact all the way to our property line. The road also provides an alternate route during flooding when access to Wilson Road has been, has not been possible. This road goes to Purdue, as I said, which Purdue goes to Lake Patience, and Lake Patience to 41. Also, GPS has been routed, has routed medical personnel to the home by this road, so we would not want to have that cut off if that were to be the case.
Go ahead.
Okay. This road was made over 75 years ago, and has been used continuously, as I said. The use of it was conveyed to my father by his cousin, WC Law, the owner of this property generations back. It's been in use ever since, and I would like to just speak on that to say, to keep that road, so we can still, it can be of use.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate you coming in. Anybody else want to speak on this one?
So can staffer the applicant point out where this road is that she's talking about? Because I'm not clear where her property is or where the road is.
Yeah, I can't tell on this map.
Could you just come forward and state your name and address, please? And just speak right into that microphone.
Betsy Law Lamoy, 3150 Wilson Road, Land O' Lakes, 34638. Several of my family members and I live on property directly south of this parcel being reviewed. I can't say that I'm really for it being developed, but I understand these things happen. My concern, our concern, is about a driveway, a road that provides access to our family property that has been in our family for 75, greater than 75 years. This small driveway that comes off of Purdue Road. It may be part of this 80-foot future vision road. I understand, I've been told Sharon Law will retain ownership of this small road. It provides access to our property. It continues past her house to our property line, which is, which is on the south side of the review property. It has been regularly used for 75, over 75 years to access the property. It's also a part of the historic, what was historic Grove, Law Grove, as Mr. Hobby mentioned. We have, we use it regularly. Also, Duke Energy's power line has, comes down this road and comes to our homestead. And so, to provide power to that house there, which is a residence, that road needs to remain accessible and intact all the way to our property line. The road also provides an alternate route during flooding when access to Wilson Road has been, has not been possible. This road goes to Purdue, as I said, which Purdue goes to Lake Patience, and Lake Patience to 41. Also, GPS has been routed, has routed medical personnel to the home by this road. So, we would not want to have that cut off if that were to be the case.
Go ahead.
Okay. This road was made over 75 years ago and has been used continuously, as I said. The use of it was conveyed to my father by his cousin, W.C. Law, the owner of this property generations back. It's been in use ever since. And I would like to just speak on that to say, to keep that road so we can still, it can be of use.
Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Anybody else who wanted to speak on this one?
So, can staff or the applicant point out where this road is that she's talking about? Because I'm not clear where her property is or where the road is.
Yeah, I can't tell on this map.
I think I have, this is Clark Hobby, I think I have a simple answer here that may satisfy her. The area where she's talking about, to the extent we are not building this new public road on it, we will be giving right-of-way. So, at all times, it will remain open for you guys to get to where we build our new public road that's paved.
Okay. Just pass that diamond, though, it continues on now.
We will be dedicating, all the way on our site, we will be dedicating right-of-way all the way to our southern boundary. So, that should get you where you need, that's right, where you need to be.
Then that will be, does that move in writing somewhere?
It's, it's actually required by the MPUD conditions. But I'll be happy to meet with her afterwards and explain that.
So, how far south are you building the vision road, Clark?
It's to that access point, I think, as shown on the, the master plan there. See if we can get it up.
So, it's not going all the way down to that property, but you're dedicating right-of-way?
Right, we'd dedicate past the point that we built.
So, you're not touching the existing road?
That's right. She'd be, she'd be able to continue on her road on up to where the access point that you can see, that's probably two-thirds of the way.
Will there be a way to, for her to get on the new paved road once she gets up to a certain point?
I can, I can say this much, we'll make sure that we don't barricade it, if that's a question. I mean, if somebody's got a historic right to get out there, we're not going to landlock anybody and keep them from having access to a county vision road.
Are you, yeah, I'm just saying you might need to build some small driveway off the new paved road to get to her existing road.
Like I said, I think I can solve this pretty easy because it's within the area we're going to be dedicating for right-of-way. So, if you'll permit me, I'll meet with her afterwards. We have Steve Henry here, and we have the project civil engineer, and we can ensure that we make an adequate transition there so that there's no loss of access. That wasn't our intent in any event. It's actually to provide more access.
Okay. Are you building down to where the double arrows are? Is that where it's?
It's right there.
Yeah, right there. Right there?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Alright, you're welcome. Alright, if there are no further questions? Air motion?
Motion to approve PC nine?
I second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll signify by saying aye if you approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Like sign if you don't approve. Motion carries. Okay. Alright, I think we're back to five, right?
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning and Development. This is item PUDD 227585 Eagle II Industrial EC MPUD. The subject site is south of State Road 52, half-mile west of Bellamy Brothers. It's in the Central Pasco Employment Village. The current zoning district is AC. To the north is AR, to the south is AC. To the west is AC, and to the east is MPUD. Future land use is employment center, to the north is rez one, to the south is rez three, to the west is EC, and to the east is EC. The proposed rezoning request from AC Agricultural to EC MPUD, Employment Center Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of 2 million square feet of corporate business park, target business, light industrial uses, 300,000 square feet of support commercial office on approximately 321.13 acres. This is the master plan. The proposed development is currently within CPEV. The parcels are currently vacant, being used for agricultural pursuits. Effective August 24, 2021, the landowners within this Eagle II EC MPUD entered into a certain exchange agreement, CPV master planned land use designations proportioned to Swope and Coca-Cola Access East Parcels, which is now recorded OR Book 10426, page 461 of Public Records, Pasco County, Florida. The applicant is seeking the following variations from the LDC, sections 805.6, 902.2M, to allow industrial parcels under single ownership to maintain their stormwater ponds, wetlands, open space without having to plat them as separate tracks and convey them to a separate entity for the maintenance. All activity, maintenance restrictions in such areas shall be in accordance with the environmental resource permit. The proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County LDC Chapter 400, subsection 402.2 zoning amendment, MPUD master plan unit development, and within the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. The PUDD recommends approval to BCC with conditions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Good job.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I know.
Brad Tippett, Plague, I'm going to thank William Vermillion. Those of you that have, you've seen some of his work before come through on consent, but he hasn't had to present before, and he got dropped, this one was dropped in his lap last minute when Jessica left us, so he did a great job. But we're going to be here collectively to answer any questions if you need it. And I think Cynthia wants to speak a little bit on it.
She has 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
Good afternoon, Cynthia Spidel, 401 East Jackson Street, Sterns Weaver. And I have been sworn, just two minor cleanup items. We received an opposition letter in the middle of the night, so I'd like to make sure that some of our presentation time is allocated and allotted for rebuttal after the neighbor speaks. And then for the record, I'd like to submit letters of support from Keith Swope, Dale Swope, Gerald Delfino, and the Aprilies. So, if I could enter those into the record.
Okay. Sound your motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Favorit?
Aye.
Aye.
And is it okay to reserve some time for rebuttal?
I'll be fair.
Thank you. So, again, my name is Cynthia Spidel. I'm an AICP certified planner with 17 years, almost 17 years of experience in planning. My first day at Pasco County was May 31, 2005. So, we're gaining on that 17 years quickly. So, our whole team is here today, either online or in person, from engineering, planning, Jesse Iserman from Sterns Weaver is here for me for land use, Mike Grazer's our transportation engineer, and I'm for environmental, we have clock call, and I believe they are online virtually.
Cynthia, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Stop her time, please. Todd, we don't have what's being shown up here. Is there a way to at least get these TV screens oriented so that we can see them up here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that would help.
Thank you.
So, the property is located on 321 acres, excuse me, on the south side of State Road 52, about a half a mile west of Bellamy and State Road 52. And it's located in the Central Pasco Employment Village subarea. The current future land use classification is thus employment center with subarea policies. And the current zoning is AC, and the current use is vacant and agricultural. So, there's a lot to digest here, so I'm just going to try to keep it real big picture and just walk you through it step by step. So, the future land use is employment center with subarea policies. And as I stated before, it's in the CPEV subarea. So, it falls under the subarea policy, FLU 7.1.12. And as William pointed out, that was most recently amended in 2021. So, those are our guiding policies that we, that we used as guidelines to come up with the MPUD conditions of approval. And we are subject to the maximums within the subarea policies. And we did, as required by those revised subarea policies, conduct a CPEV landowner meeting on November 8, 2021. Let me just go back a second. If I hold on to the top. So, this is where the, this is where the parcel is. And it's also the same landowner as the one who came in with Eagle I, which is just to the east of the property. So, surrounding uses and zoning, so we are abutting in south of State Road 52. To the north, there's AC, AR, and AR-5. To the south, we have AC and public lands. It's the Cypress Creek Wellhead. We are well aware of that, and we've incorporated that, that into the MPUD conditions of approval. To the east, we have AC and Eagle I EC MPUD. And to the west, we have AC and vacant. And I kind of sketched in the, oh, wait, here I go. I sketched in the Swope MPUDs. You can see the relationship to Swope MPUD. That was most recently approved. It just doesn't show up on the GIS layers just yet because it probably has to become effective past the appeal period. So, this is the wellhead protection area. We are well aware that we're in the 10-year and the 5-year protection zones, and MPUD condition number three addresses that we have to comply with the groundwater protection ordinance. So, we received an objection letter in the, in the middle of the night. I'm going to try to preemptively address some of those concerns with the presentation. But long story short, you really need to look at Eagle I and Eagle II together collectively. And one of the things that came up with Eagle I is this eagle's nest here, which is shown right down here, which has sort of readjusted some of the lines. Amazon parcel is up here, and there's an MPUD nonsubstantial modification on file with staff right now that sort of cleans up a lot of items and will clarify some of the things that are going on with EC MPUD Eagle II. So, we are asking for 2 million square feet of light industrial. We are asking for 300,000 square feet of commercial. That 300,000 square feet of commercial represents 15% of that 2 million. As a general rule of thumb from when I worked at the county, as well as being back on the private side, that 15% is below, usually staff uses 20% as sort of the threshold. So, we're below that sort of 20% policy guidance that has been used as a ballpark figure in the past. But when you look at Eagle I, together with Eagle II, it's only 9%. And on file with the county right now is a nonsubstantial modification to Eagle I that basically releases the commercial entitlements that were previously allocated to Eagle I back into the pot, moves some of the stuff over to Eagle II. But collectively, we're really having 300,000 square feet of support commercial for the 1.2 million square feet of light industrial in Eagle I and the 2 million here. So, together it would be 3.2 million. And then that 300,000 of the 3.2 million is 9.3%. So, we have two, we have two vision roads that go throughout parcel. We've got Vision Road S and Vision Road AC. So, Vision Road AC is currently shown in a location where DOT is at 60% design for a flood plain mitigation pond. So, in order to ensure that the county is going to get Vision Road AC, we have our, a different alignment right here. And depending on where the flood plain mitigation pond actually ends up going, either way, Pasco County is going to get Vision Road AC, they're going to get Vision Road S. It's just, you know, where exactly is it going to go? We did write in the option to have both roadways. So, you might even get two ACs along with the Vision Road S. So, this is Vision Road S here, and this is Vision Road AC here. So, we also added to the Eagle II EC MPUD a condition that requires Vision Roadway S and AC to be constructed to serve adjacent development. So, moving on to the next slide. So, this, this one here shows we have a nonsubstantial modification on file for Eagle I that we're going to work with staff, and we're going to ensure that, so that the board can see both of them together. We're going to have that as an attachment then to the Eagle II EC MPUD when it goes to the Board of County Commissioners next month. And here you can see that this Vision Roadway S then is aligned in a logical location that services both parcels. We're also going to add a condition to Eagle I EC MPUD. Right now, Eagle I does not require, is not required to construct Vision Roadway S just to donate right-of-way. But we talked to staff this morning extensively, and we will have the two MPUDs match to ensure that this roadway is constructed to serve adjacent development. And as you can see, here's the, here's that eagle's nest right there. So, again, it's 9.3% for both EC MPUDs. It's a support commercial component. The vision graphic, I just really want to highlight that the vision map, the vision highway map is, the alignments are not set in stone. The alignments on the CPEV subarea map, map were not set in stone. They are always just a guide for the future in terms of connectivity and ensuring that connectivity. And then there's a lot of engineering and environmental review that has to go through. So, this is the, the beginning of a long process where we go and then we engineer the site, and, and that road goes into an engineered location. So, then with that, staff has found the application to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code and recommends approval. We have letters of support from some of the landowners, which we put into the record. We do, we can like to reserve some of that time for rebuttal, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We did spend a lot of time with staff today. We have a methodology to address some of the, the questions that staff had and David had. And we're happy to work on all that between today and, and the Board of County Commissioners to make sure that everything's neat and clean. But the bottom line is, is we have a light industrial project. It's an employment center. We want to, we have people that are looking for a large light industrial acreage tracks, and we want to help the county fulfill that vision and bring some jobs to Pasco County. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Cynthia, when we spoke this morning, I think you said that you were willing to add language to condition 41. It would say something to the effect that some of those commercial entitlements could be returned back to the overall CPEV pot if and when staff removes the cap on industrial entitlements within CPEV. Is that still something you're willing to do?
Yes, I spoke to the client after, after you and I had that conversation. And if we could get 3 million square feet of light industrial, then he would be willing to put 200,000 of that commercial back into the pot. So, it would be 3 million light industrial and 100,000 square feet of commercial.
So, then you'd be willing to add that language to condition 41?
Yes.
200,000 of it would go back into the overall pot?
Yes.
If staff has successfully gets the cap removed on, or at least an additional million
Yes.
of light industrial added to CPEV?
Yes.
And so, I guess a related question for staff is, when are you anticipating processing that amendment to remove the cap on, either remove the cap or significantly increase the amount of industrial in CPEV?
Amy Hyler, Long Range Planning. We plan to get that started as soon as possible, aiming for a July LPA, and then adoption in October.
Okay. And then my, that was my only question for you, but, okay, so, on the, the Eagle I and Eagle II, and you quickly went over that map, but the color version of it might be better. I don't know if there's an earlier version that's got colors on it?
Let's go. I think I have, in my backup slides, I have some in there. I got it. Those are all the subarea policies in case we wanted them. Sorry, I gotta scroll. This one?
Yeah, so, and you have sort of the before and after? Is there one that still shows the before and after?
I don't know if I put it all on one slide. Nope, I did not. Oh, wait, that was it, wasn't it? That's before.
So, this is the before condition? And then the next slide is the after condition, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I think part of the issue here is if you look at Eagle II in isolation from, between the before condition and the after condition, it does look like an increase of retail land.
Right.
But my understanding from our conversation this morning, though, is if you consider the change in Eagle I, that there isn't an increase in retail land. That if you eliminate the red out of Eagle I, that your after condition either has Eagle II or less red than the before condition. Is that accurate?
Correct, yes. Yeah, this is about 30, this here is about 35 acres. And then when we, this here is about 33 acres together.
So, I think part of the, and I read the objection letter. I think part of the confusion or concern is that, that what's not before the Planning Commission today is the change to Eagle I, and I'm not blaming anybody, but the opposition and the Planning Commission would have no way of knowing that all that red is being removed from Eagle I and being moved over to Eagle II because the application to do that is not before the Planning Commission and nor was the, nor were the objectors privy to it. So, I think that's part of the issue. So, that's why I told Cynthia that this, the Eagle I, even though it's a nonsubstantial amendment, the Eagle I application to do that
Right.
needs to be part of the record of Eagle II. Otherwise, nobody's going to understand that that red area is being eliminated from Eagle I.
Yeah, and we agree. And that's the reason why we filed the nonsubstantial, nonsubstantial modification to Eagle I with this. this ECMPUD for Eagle 2, so that we could clean them both up together. And we're happy to include that. We can work with staff to make sure that that nonsubstantial modification is attached as an agenda, you know, attached as an exhibit to Eagle 2 when we go to the board next month.
Okay. So my third question for you is about the road. So the road currently is shown along the southern boundary of Eagle 1 and Eagle 2, correct?
Yes.
That's where it's currently showing?
This is where it's currently shown, yeah.
So if the road had been in that location, would your client have built it?
No.
So in the new location, is your client going to build it?
Yes.
Okay. And that's because it's more internal to the site? All right. And then my last question for you is, part of the letter deals with an issue about the cutting of trees?
Yeah, I'm going to have the landowner speak to that.
Okay. You want to just have him address that now?
It's up to you. I thought maybe we should save all that for rebuttal.
It's, we have the letter here. We might as well let him address it.
George South, 3092 Gulf Wind Circles, Hernando Beach. I have been sworn in. All right. I am cutting trees on the property. What I have done is I have sold 72 acres to Amazon, or about 70 acres to Amazon. I have the other parcel behind Amazon under contract. I'm effectively losing 140 acres of my cattle grazing land to industrial development that I certainly hope is going to benefit the county and myself also. There is approximately 100, the same amount of wooded area on the Coca-Lacus East property, which is zoned agricultural and is under an agricultural exemption. Right now, clearing that land, which costs about $1,500 an acre, is far cheaper than my trying to purchase any land in this immediate vicinity to replace that grazing land. I have no guarantees that there's going to be a zoning approval, and I have no guarantees that I'll ever sell this property. And cows don't care about rezoning. All they care about is, I need some grass to eat. So logging the timber off the property is just a natural agricultural practice, and so is the clearing of the land to make improved pasture for grazing. And that's what we're currently doing.
So, Mr. Tippin, I guess I'll ask you, how does that work when they come in for site plan approval? Do they have to replace those trees or mitigate for them? Or how does that work?
So that's one of the things that we have discussed. And it depends on the ag exemption and the type of trees that are removed. But at time of preliminary plan, we would identify if there is any mitigation that needs to occur.
Yeah, but it is possible they would have to mitigate, either replace or mitigate for the trees that are taken down?
It is possible, depending on what's identified at the time of site plan.
I would say it'd be absolutely highly unlikely it's under complete and total agricultural exemption until the site plan is submitted. It will probably likely be years, because this property is going to develop from east to west before the far western side of this property where I'm clearing is ever going to be under.
Yeah, I'm not asking about prior to you submitting a site plan approval. I'm asking, once you submit a site plan approval, is it possible that you'll have to replace or mitigate for those trees? And the answer from staff is yes.
It's possible.
Well, I think that's what the code reads. That's how I read the code. Is that the second you submit a site plan approval, your ag exemption's gone.
That's correct.
Okay.
So if there's any trees, okay. It's, it is possible that we would have to mitigate for trees and/or add trees because of any tree ordinances that you might have at that time of site plan approval. That's correct. And right now, by the way, we've identified the wetlands, we've delineated them, we've had them adjudicated by SWIFT, MUD, and DEP, both together. And we are not doing any tree removal in the wetlands, with the exception of some select logging of large pine trees that are subject to beetle infestation and everything else when you cut other trees on the property. So we're not doing anything that's not in accordance with standard BMPs and normal agricultural exemption.
I just wanted you to be clear and to hear it on the record that even if you're operating under an ag exemption, doesn't mean that lives forever. When you go to develop it, that you may have to replace some of what was taken down.
I understand.
Oh, I'm understanding that if the trees are gone, there's nothing to replace, once you, once you apply. Is that correct?
Well, that's my understanding also.
I was asking Brad. Thank you.
So yes, it depends on the surveying that's done, what's identified, tree species and different things of that nature. There are certain types of trees that are allowed to be removed under various circumstances that would not need mitigation. So there's a lot of different factors. That's what we do at the time of survey at the site plan.
But when you do the survey, you're surveying the trees that are still there, that will be taken out, not the trees that have already been taken out. Correct?
Yes.
I understand that pine trees are considered a crop. So you can take down pine trees. But there are also lots of, you know, period oaks and things like that that can't be taken down without mitigating them. But if they're gone, they're gone. You know, you can't mitigate something that's not there. Just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Well, I guess I need clarification, Mr. Chairman, between what David's saying and what you're saying now. So has the site plan been, if the site plan hasn't been submitted yet?
No.
Then, yeah, how would those trees get mitigated for? So that's where I'm confused, either David or Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, may I be recognized?
Pardon me?
Good afternoon, may I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Jessica Isterman. I'm a land use attorney with Sterns Weaver Miller, representing the applicant today. The applicant intends to comply with the tree ordinances as they exist today or as they're amended. With respect to the current tree clearing, there is a valid ag exemption applicable to the property, so no laws have been violated to that effect, and it is not applicable to the application before us today.
We aren't saying that he's violated anything right now. But what we're trying to do is explain what the ramifications will be later on. So I think what you're speaking to is totally off-base of what we're talking about.
Well, he intends to fully comply with your ordinances.
Yeah. The code, the code says that your exemption goes away once you submit a site plan. The issue that I think the chair and Brad are talking about is how does staff do the surveys once they come in? I don't know if staff has the ability to, when those surveys are done, take into account prior removals or not, because there could be new growth at that point. There could be stumps there. I don't know how staff determines what was or was not there when they're doing their tree surveys.
So we typically wouldn't. We can do, this, this commission can, can make a request that that survey be done. Now, at this point, we can do that as a form of a sampling, where you take a certain amount that's typical of the acreage, so you don't have to actually survey the entire site, which would not be cost-effective realistically. But you can do a sampling of it to identify that, and that can, that number can be used for mitigation purposes when it comes time to site plan, if that's something that you wish to impose.
All right, Brad. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
I think that was all my questions, Mr. Chair. I don't know if anybody else has questions?
And anything else?
I don't have anything else unless you need me to answer anything else.
No, well, let's see what the, what the objectors have, and then we'll give you some time to respond. All right. Is there anyone here to object or speak about this project?
Daniel Bergen, Civil Undemand, 3802 Ehrlich Road, Suite 312, here representing DND Ranch of Pasco County, of Pasco, sorry. They are the adjacent landowner immediately to the west of Eagle 2. So, sorry, I'll back up. So if you're looking at this map that's available, that's on the screen here, they would be on the left side of the screen, where you see the tan, high-density residential, support commercial, and industrial land uses that are comprised of that parcel. I apologize about the middle-of-the-night objection letter. We were provided, or, you know, I was provided the conditions from staff on Monday, so we needed a day and a half to, to try to get, get our mind wrapped around what we find as a troubling approval. So I'm going to just briefly try to talk through is, has everyone been privileged to the letter of objection that we sent in? Okay, so glad to hear that.
I think it was distributed to the entire planning commission. But if you want us to receive and file it for the record, we can.
No, we're fine.
Okay.
So as we identified currently, or what was identified previously, was that Eagle 2 seeking 300,000 square foot of commercial use. As Mr. Goldstein had said, when you look at what was initially, under current entitlements approved, Eagle 2 has 10.4 acres of support commercial. If you were to do the equitable density that should be awarded to Eagle 2 based on the density that's allowed within the CPEV, they are much higher than what they should be given. So there's 950,000 square feet of support commercial that is permitted within the entire CPEV. If you were to find out what, or if you were to calculate the equitable density per acre, that amounts to approximately 6,219 square feet per acre of commercial use. Our position here isn't that we oppose people seeking approval for their, to entitle their properties. What we seek is equitable approval. And what is equitable is an equal distribution on an upland developable acre of support commercial or any other entitlement within the CPEV that is distributed amongst all owners. So as the applicant representative was saying, they used, I believe it was 14 or 15% based on acreage that we weren't sure where they came up with. That's just not, not equitable. So what we're trying to determine here is, you know, what is the equitable acreage that is allowed amongst all owners within the CPEV? And that all applications that come before yourselves and the Board of County Commissioners are in line with exactly that. So this application does not meet that standard. It's above that. And that's what this letter identifies. Even then, if they were to transfer the entitlements from Eagle 1, as hasn't been exactly filed yet, which is somewhat the cart, you know, ahead of the horse, and they were to go along with the 33.7 acres that they intend to seek, they would have 500,000 square feet of commercially, of support commercial amongst 33.7 acres, which they would have over 50% of the support commercial entitlements in approximately a quarter of the overall support commercial. And they would be extremely unbalanced. And that would...
Can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
Because I'm not sure that last fact you said is accurate. My understanding, and I realize there's confusion because we don't have the Eagle 1 application in front of us.
Correct.
But my understanding is they're eliminating commercial entirely in Eagle 1, and that the only thing they're seeking for Eagle 2 is 300,000, not 500,000. Is that correct? Okay, so they're not seeking 500,000 in Eagle 2. They're seeking 300,000, and they're proposing to eliminate what's in Eagle 1 entirely.
So Eagle 1 has 200,000 square feet?
And I realize there's confusion. I don't blame you for being confused. I was confused until it was explained to me. But they are, there's a nonsubstantial amendment in, again, not approved, in the pipeline, that would eliminate all commercial entitlements from Eagle 1. That, the only commercial that Eagle 1 and Eagle 2 would have would be 300,000, not 500,000. I just want to make sure you...
I understand that. But even at that number, David, it's unbalanced.
I understand. I just want to make sure we're operating under correct facts. I don't want you to think it was 500,000 when it's not.
Okay. Well, we'll have to see when it, when it's filed, because we don't know at this point in time, right? Yeah, so...
I understand the confusion again, because I was confused too. But I just didn't want you to stand up here saying it was 500,000 when I know it's not. So go ahead, you can continue.
I would, I would hope that when, if this does get amended, or Eagle 1 is filed, that when they apply for, when they adjust their numbers for Eagle 2, which is what we're hoping for, that it's based on an equitable distribution of the support commercial square feet.
So while we're on the topic, the applicant said they would commit to return 200,000 of the 300,000 back into the CPEV pot, assuming staff removes the cap on industrial. If that were to happen, would that address your concern or not?
I would have to calculate what that, how that 100,000 square feet relates to the total support commercial acreage that is then on Eagle 2.
So I think it would still be the 33 acres. So it would be 100,000 on 33 acres.
Well, if that's in line with 6,219 square feet per acre, which is what's permitted through the...
I'm not good at math, so I don't know whether that is or not.
100,000 square feet is going to be about a little over 2 acres, so...
So if you give me a second, I could get a calculator real quick and check it.
Well, you, what was it?
I mean, currently, right now, that's not what we're dealing with, which is why we're here in objection, because the application, the petition's unclear as to what their intent is. And the current application that we're understanding is, these numbers are unbalanced, and it's clearing the CPUD.
No, I blame you. You're preaching to the choir. I was confused too, until this morning. And when I realized they were giving up their entitlements in Eagle 1, then I also asked them, are they willing to return some of the Eagle 2 300,000 into the pot if we remove the cap on industrial? And the answer I got was yes, 200,000 of it. So I think you can assume, I think it's a fairly safe assumption that the board will approve the removal of the cap on industrial, because our board told staff to do it. I mean, this wasn't discretionary. They were, staff was directed to do this.
Sure.
So I feel fairly safe in knowing the board's going to make that happen. So my real question is, if they only end up with 100,000 in Eagle 2 and nothing in Eagle 1, does that address your concern, at least on the entitlement issue?
It's going to be close. But it, again, I mean, it's, that seems, if it's six, roughly 6,300 square feet per acre, times 33...
You're at about 200,000.
Yeah, so that would be, that's, that's, that's in line if, if they were somewhere in that, in that range.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, again, but we'd have to see the plan to make sure that what, what's being proposed is actually executed.
I understand, and I understand Eagle 1 application's not in front of us, and that confuses things. But nor is the condition that we talked about in there now. But I'm asking, if you had an Eagle 1 application in front of you that had zero commercial, and there was a condition on Eagle 2 that returned 200,000 to the pot once the board approves the land use change, does that address your concern? It sounds like the answer is yes?
If there was, we would be satisfied if there were 207,000 square feet. They would be allowed up to 207,000 square feet of support commercial within Eagle 2.
Okay, but they're actually proposing even less than that.
And then, yeah, then it would address it.
They're proposing 100,000 after they return 200,000 to the pot.
Yeah, so as long as they're, you know, as long as the application, if they, if they were under 207,000 square feet, they could get more. It would, and they were at 33.7 acres, which is what I think is contemplated.
Yeah, I want to be clear. I think they're seeking approval for 300, but they're willing to commit to a condition that returns 200 of that to the pot once the land use change takes effect.
Yeah, if we saw that condition, and then they, they complied with another of the policies that showed the net exchange between the parcels, and then what was remaining in the CPEV, that that was memorialized as part of, of the conditions of approval, then we would be in support as long, as long as we're in line with what you're saying. But we would have to see it...
I understand that none of it's there now. I'm just asking, if all that was there, would you be okay? At least on the entitlement issue?
If, yes.
Okay. All right. You can finish now.
Okay. This is, I know you and I are struggling with this, but because we're basing it off of something that's... Okay, I, this is, I know you and I are struggling with this, but because we're basing it off of something that has yet to have happened. Again, you know, there's, based on some of these.
Can I just interrupt you a little bit? Because we've gone over the time substantially, but I want to make sure that we allow you the proper amount of time, and I'm going to allow the, the other party to have extra time too if they need it, so.
Sure, thank you, I'll, I'll try to be brief, because I, we talked about some of these through David.
Hopefully you're not counting the time I was asking him a question, but, but I don't know who's keeping track of time, but.
That's all right, I'll, I'll practice brevity. Again, we have multiple land use exchanges between multiple parcels that are contemplated as part of this application that seem, and it have not been justified through the CPEV with respect to multiple policies, specifically Policy Eight, that all need to be, to show, to be shown and supported. These applications, if there are land use exchanges, need to go through the proper processes before they're included as part of Eagle Two, which if Eagle Two is contemplated on these non substantial applications being processed with land use exchanges between other owners in the CPEV, those should be executed either concurrently before we get to this stage, or even before the, or approved before this application is brought in front of the commission. So we're trying to hypothesize what the applicant is wanting to do, but has yet to be filed. So we, we object to, to the application on, on that point, which discusses, you know, multiple conditions of Condition 40 and 41 under Policy Eight, as well as the entitlements concerns that we were having a struggle with. If we, if we go into the master plan here, we discussed this Vision Road, which when we did our initial neighborhood meeting, the Vision Road was shown along the southern portion of Eagle Two, and then would kind of head on a north, northwesterly fashion through DND Ranch. This new plan, which we have just been privileged to, shows the Vision Road bifurcating the Eagle Two property, and then doing an interconnection with DND Ranch right there adjacent to some environmentally sensitive areas, and then meandering where it, back to the south where it joins and it crosses that wetland area. Are you all able to follow that? That was a, that was unilaterally adjusted by the applicant. At no point in time was DND Ranch consulted about the relocation of this Vision Road. We haven't had a opportunity to vet the location of the Vision Road. I feel that it might be beneficial to them, but we haven't had a chance to tell you if it's beneficial to us. And we can immediately tell you that based on the new location of this road, what you can see would be upland, high density residential areas that are almost undevelopable based on their location. So we feel that this was somewhat of an egregious assumption that was made on behalf of the applicant without consulting DND Ranch and making this adjustment. So if this is part of the record, you know, we staunchly object to the location of the Vision Road and, you know, request that we have, you know, ample time to vet it and discuss it with the applicant before it's approved, which is a major concern of ours. Lastly, there, we had mentioned some of the environmental impacts that have occurred on the property. This is a concern of the owner. As I understand it, the, are we able to zoom to it? Is there an aerial that we can pull up for the property? William, did you have an, is there an aerial in your presentation?
I think Patty.
Pascua map is fine. Sure. We have an aerial here, we can. Okay. So we understand that the property is, is under an agricultural exemption currently. However, the trees that were removed were located within the former location of the Vision Road, which was on the southern boundary of the property. So if you were to zoom in where it says Service Road, if you follow that southern boundary heading east west, those, that's where the trees were removed. So it's, it's kind of hard to understand the applicant's justification for increased pasture space when the trees were removed, which would have been county right of way based on the initial vision plan that we've all been working off of, or the initial location for the Vision Road that we've been operating off of. So the open pasture still exists, but the, the trees to the south along the southern boundary, which would have had to have been mitigated for as part of the development of the property, which is specified in the ordinances, are, have been removed. So we are, we object to that, and we feel that the county should, should consider that as part of the application. And then, Andy, would you like to speak?
Good afternoon, Andy Joe Scaglione, been sworn in. A lot of this, actually, most of this information was not submitted with the application, and that's why it's, it's such a mess. I feel like it hasn't been very transparent, actually, it's been misleading. At the neighborhood meeting, this was not, all this information regarding Eagle One was never even discussed or even brought up. I will, in all fairness to Mr. Vermellen, got this thrown on his desk a month and two days ago, and it's taken me over 10 years to figure this out, it's very complicated. So thank you for your service, a Marine, and, and I just want to say that's not, it wasn't fair to him to be throwing this a month, a month ago. So if I can't understand it, and I've been involved in this because it wasn't in the application, wasn't in the neighborhood meeting, I will, I, we've asked for, March one, we sent a letter for clarification, we never received a response. We received actually a response on the 23rd saying that, that they just found our email, and they were, and, and if we would, if we still need the information, we said we did. We never got a response, and that's been over two months as of today, since that, that response. The, I will, the trees, I mean, you know, this is a land speculation deal, this isn't a cattle issue regarding taking out all these, these are. Code enforcement counted so far over 100 trees back in February, oak trees over five inches. It is unbelievable what, we're supposed to be a steward of the land, not, not do it, do what Mr. Southward has done. And in summary, I'd, I'd like to repeat what Mr. already said a month ago, that, that at the end of the day, when myself and some other owners go in that bucket, that there's something left in there, and it's just not empty. My property owners coming in now and grabbing everything. And I'd like to ask for a continuance because all this information was not in the application and, and that we kind of worked this out with the road and some of these other issues and have a clear understanding before this goes forward. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you for volunteering all your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask them one question? You want to go first, Chris?
My, my question just is, when, when did you see the change in the Vision Road?
This was, actually, this report was sent to us on Monday, was it?
Monday.
Mon, Monday?
The first time you saw that, that change was Monday?
Yeah.
So.
It was sent through the county, not through the applicant.
Understood. So can, I have one more question, can we put the graphic back up that had the Vision Road on it? So I preferred the color one better, but I can live with this one, I guess. I guess my question is, because the applicant is saying that if the Vision Road had stayed on the southern boundary, they wouldn't have built it at all, and I read the conditions, and there probably wasn't any requirement for them to build it at all if it had stayed on the southern boundary. So it seems to me that there might be some benefit to you to have the road constructed to your eastern property line versus just a line on a map. I mean, because it gives you an additional access to your property that wouldn't exist if it was on the southern boundary. Am I wrong, or?
We hadn't, I mean, this was, this was done, we got this on Monday. I mean, we haven't had really, I mean, how do you, I mean, this is a big deal, going over my family's property, and I don't think we've been given enough time to even.
I, I agree that you need some time to look at it, I'm just saying that you may want to consider whether there is some benefit to having a road, another access to your property from the east, because the way I look at your property, and again, the color map is better, it, that part almost seems landlocked because there's a big wetland system that kind of goes through the middle of your property. That part of your property seems somewhat landlocked, that, yeah, so because of that big green system, I don't know what that is, but it's probably some.
That's a creek.
Okay, so the eastern side of your.
Cypress Creek.
The eastern side of your property seems somewhat landlocked unless there's a road that goes out to the east. And what the applicant is saying is that by moving it, they're going to build you a road going out to the east. If they had stayed on the southern boundary, they wouldn't have built it at all. So again, I don't, it's your call, but I'm just saying, I'm looking at it and thinking that road may actually benefit you more than hurt you. Again, now, there may be a way to orient the alignment a little better so you, doesn't take out so much, it doesn't leave you with a piece of land that's totally undevelopable, but again, I think the road in general would be better for you if it's built versus not built.
So David, I, I guess I'm confused, because when I read through the conditions, the policies and the future land use for the CPEV, you know, it says specifically here that it's an interconnected community between parcels. So to, to say that the road, the east west Vision Road would not be constructed.
Well, I can tell you, I read the Eagle One conditions, and maybe staff missed something, I don't know, but I'm just telling you, if you read the Eagle One, Eagle One conditions, there's no requirement for them to build that east west road.
Maybe in Eagle One, but it should be in Eagle Two.
But where's it going to go? I mean, it's, it's not in Eagle One, it's, it would be, the, the problem is, is that generally the county, now, if it was a mobility fee credit deal, that would be different, but we generally only make them build roads that are needed to serve their development. If it's on the southern boundary, I'm not sure it's ever going to be needed to serve their development. If it's in the middle of their project, there's a better argument for the county that it's needed to serve their development, therefore they should have to construct it.
Well, if you, when we objected to this, it was, the objection was based on the proposed location and the lack of knowledge that they were going to be relocating it. So we would like the opportunity to at least sit with them.
I don't, I don't disagree with you that maybe there was a lack of communication about the relocation. I, I'll be honest with you, I didn't even see a good, a good map showing the relocation until this morning. So I get your point. I'm only saying, once you get past that issue, that nobody communicated with you, you may want to consider whether there's a benefit to having that road relocated because if it stays on the southern boundary, I don't, I don't, being honest with you, I don't think it's going to get constructed. Brad's going to have a hard time making them construct it by saying it's needed to serve their development because it's on the southern boundary. They can build all their access off of 52 and not even need it. So by moving it to the middle of their project, now Brad does have a tool to say, you need this road for your development. They're, they're saying they will in fact construct the road if it's in the middle of the project. I'm looking at the map, that seems like that's a benefit to you to have an eastern connection to your property that you don't have now. Now, all that said, there may be a way to have it connected at a spot that, that is more beneficial to you, and I think you should work with the applicant to maybe figure that out. I'm just saying, I don't know that it's in your best interest to insist that it stay on the southern boundary. That's my point.
We're not insisting that it stays on the southern boundary.
Okay.
What we are, is we would like an opportunity to, to discuss this before it's up for approval.
But I mean, I, looking at the new alignment, I, I see your point, but there may be a way that they can kind of veer the road a little bit north and then have it come down into your property at an angle so it doesn't take a, you know, it leaves you with more developable piece. But that's something you can work out with the applicant.
Correct.
But I did, I did say, I don't think it's in your best interest to continue to assert that it should stay on the southern boundary. Because then honestly Brad's not going to be able to make them build it. And then you'll have, you'll have a line on a map that goes, that doesn't help you anything, with anything.
Sure.
The county might build it 20 years from now, but it wouldn't, it's not going to help you market your property.
I understand what you're saying, I'm real reasonable, and, and I'm open to it. Again, this was all new information, and, and I'm asking for a continuance to be able to get with the applicant, to go over all these issues, because this was not at the neighborhood meeting, and neither was it in the application. So, and, and I have, Matt Maggard, my attorney, he's on, on, he's, him and his family got, are under the weather. So if, if there's any questions of Mr. Maggard, he's on also.
Does he want to say something, or just he's available for questions?
I think he's under the weather, him and his family, but, but he's on. But anyway, thank you very much for all the time y'all spent away from your time and families, and, and again, we just asked for a continuance to get some of these new items that came upon us to discuss them and, and go from there, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Cynthia Spidel, 401 East Jackson Street, Sterns Weaver again. I'd like to enter into the record the November 8th, 2021 Landowner Meeting Summary. It is part of the application because we uploaded it in response to the response for additional information by staff. But it does go over, it has a meeting summary of what we discussed on November 8th, 2021, and then I'll show you the map that was presented at that meeting. But I'd like to have a motion to receive.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So as you know, the purpose of the Landowner Meeting is to present the MPD Master Plan to the other landowners in the CPEV. And I'm just going to go back a couple to the, and as can be shown from the meeting summary, which is part of the application on file with the county, this is the map we showed. The CPEV subarea map that the applicant seems to think sets the alignment doesn't actually really set any alignments, it just shows connectivity. It's a subarea map. We were not at the Landowner Meeting, we're not required to hold the Landowner Meeting to discuss changes to the CPEV subarea map. The Landowner Meeting is required to talk about the MPUD. This is the map we had on a big placard, we had extra handouts. This is the map that we had at that meeting that shows Vision Roadway S going through the middle of the property. So I'd just like to correct for the record that it's just not true that we did not, that we withheld this alignment. We, that was the whole purpose of the meeting, was to show them our plan, and we did that. So the other comment was with regard to the support commercial. And as we've stated for the record, we're, we're willing to add the conditions that as soon as staff can process the complaint amendment to release the caps, we're happy to increase the industrial and return the 200,000 square feet of entitlements back into the pot. I think the applicant's a little, the opposition on the applicant, the opposition's a little confused between the terminology, land use, the, and the opposition letter, he talks about the land use exchange mechanism. That's, we're not requesting a land use exchange mechanism. The land use exchange mechanism is like a trade off matrix. Well, actually, we do have a loom as part of the ECM-POD, but he's saying that this conversion from yellow to red is a land use exchange, and it's, it's just not. So, and then the Vision Road we covered. And so with that, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to.
Cynthia, on, on the Vision Road. I think their main objection, if we could, again, go back to the color map, is that the way it's oriented, if we could zoom in, kind of, there's one that had a, maybe, I guess I can live with this one. I think their, their concern is that the way it's kind of shown, once it leaves your property, it leaves them with a piece of upland north of the Vision Road that may not be that usable. So I guess the question is, is there a way that you can have the Vision Road on your property sort of start to veer more to the south so that it leaves? that it leaves them with a more developable upland piece north of the Vision Road?
In our preliminary engineering studies, David, we're probably going to actually curve the road up more and hug the, the southern boundary of the, let's say, conservation area, where we're planning on doing onsite mitigation for wetlands around the existing wetlands. And that road will actually probably curve and, and exit right about where Cynthia's arrow is, which is above where it is now. Now, what they choose to do with it, when it's on their property, from that point, we've provided the connectivity. They can swing the road and hug their line, they could, they could actually put a stop sign there and go straight south.
Yeah, I'll, since I think there's a way that you two could work out a connection point that doesn't.
We're never going to work out a connection point with Andy Scaglione. It won't ever happen.
I don't think that's necessary.
Oh, okay.
I think that's very counterproductive.
Yeah, I, based on what they're telling us, it sounds like they're willing to work with you. I'm just saying, I think there's a way to either have the road go, your, your side of the road go farther north, so, like you said, it hugs the wetlands, so that then, when they bring it down, it can hug the wetland too, and not give, leave them with a sort of remainder piece that isn't unusable.
I understand his argument, and I, and I think that those roads are just preliminary conceptual ideas that will take place, you know, as this develops. You know, the first customer that comes in and wants to buy a, a lot is gonna start to define it. The next one even more.
I get, I get your point, but the issue is, once it's shown on your MPUD plan in this location, staff's gonna kind of assume that that is the location. And so, if there's a way to work this out now, where you either move it farther north or farther south, so he's not left with an unusable piece, I think this could be, I mean, because it sounds like the entitlement issue, he's fine with, based on the condition we talked about.
Okay.
You know, the, the tree issue, we may be able to resolve by the tree survey requirement. So, we're down to this one issue, which is figuring out a way to have this road aligned, so it's not adversely impacting them.
So, David, the conditions currently state that the roads shown on the MPD master plan are conceptual and will be finalized at site plan. So, I mean, I certainly would be open to expanding that, to say that, you know, it will move north, but we don't, we haven't engineered the site fully yet. So, you know, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to nail down, that's the reason why these roadways go through this concept planning phase, and then they get engineered, and then they get finalized down the road. So, you know, we do have the, I think the, the wetland portion has been completed, but we have not fully engineered the site yet, so.
I don't remember, is, is our standard condition that says you'll coordinate with the adjacent landowner?
For the connection point, yeah, we can, we could add that, at the time of site plan.
Aye.
Because that's what we did, what we did for.
William, is it in there, do you remember?
No, we can, we can add that. So, what we did for Eagle One was, we said that wherever Eagle One goes, and then Coca, it was Coca-Locas East at that time, would have to meet that. But then he purchased it. So, now it's, so now the Eagle One-Eagle Two alignment is up to, is up to George. But we're happy to say kind of something similar than for the other side now, as, as the development moves west, that at the time of site plan, we'll coordinate the connection point with the adjacent landowner.
One other point I'd like to make is that we submitted our Eagle One minor MPUD.
Oh, that's true, yes.
Two, two months ago. This is not something that's, it's been public record for two months. It's not something that was hidden, and it's not something that we're proposing to do after the fact. It's something we voluntarily given up the support commercial.
Correct.
And we have volunteered to build the road and move the road to the southern boundary of Amazon, which creates a far more usable location for the road for us, and for future other landowners. And it gets the road constructed for it. And these are all voluntary actions that have been public record. No one should have been surprised.
Right.
If, if this objector has a civil engineer, all of, all of those names were available.
And also, staff did, in all fairness to William, I know he only picked it up last, but Jessica did put us through the wringer, and we did several responses for additional information. And the Eagle One nonsubstantial modification, the revised maps, the subarea maps, all these maps, the Vision Road maps, all these maps were all part of those responses for additional information. So, that's how we got to this point. So, it is part of the application, and it's all in Acela.
Okay, so, there is a standard condition, but I'm not sure it's gonna help them much, because it says, if the property to east or west has an approved PDP, I don't think he's gonna have an approved PDP by the time you.
I think what we can say is that the, the roadways are conceptual, and at the time of PDP, we'll have to coordinate with the landowner to finalize that connection point.
Yeah, I think you need to expand on the condition that talks about the, the alignment of those roadways.
Again, I don't think we need a continuance for that. I think we can, we can wrap that up between now and board.
You'd have to add something to condition 21 that requires you to coordinate with the adjacent landowner before setting the.
And we have language like that in other MPDs I could use.
So, it's really up to the planning commission how you want to handle this, but it sounds like if you want to proceed forward today, you would need to add language to condition 21, dealing with the coordinating with the property owner to the west about the alignment of Vision Road S. And you would have to add language to condition 41 about returning 200,000 square feet of support commercials back to the general land, general CPEV entitlements once the, the board approves the removal of the cap on the industrial. And then it would be up to the planning commission if he wanted to impose an additional condition requiring a tree survey within some period of time after the MPD approval, as opposed to waiting. Is that, that's what you're basically talking about, Brad? It would be, say, within six months of the MPD, or three, I mean.
Yeah, you can, you can set it at, you know, prior to the first PDP on the site, there would be a tree survey required.
Well, but I think, but I think your concern, though, Brad, was that if you waited till then, by then, the trees would all be.
Potentially, yes. You can't, you can't mitigate that. That's, that's something we would generally do, but we can, we can make it a different timeline.
But if, if, if this planning commission imposed a requirement that the survey be done within, say, 30 to, 30 to 60 days after the MPD approval, then you would have a survey now, right?
We would have a survey. I think the, the issue is, we, yeah, we could, we could do that. We would need to just file it with this MPUD and the Acela file, so we can pull it up later as a follow-up to this MPUD. But you can, you can certainly do it that way. I would also state that you would need to probably add that it's not the, the standard tree survey, because of the size of the property, that it, they can do a sample based on the sampling criteria that we use elsewhere for these types of surveys.
Okay, so, I think if you wanted to proceed forward today, you're looking at two or three conditions that would need to be added, but it's really up to the planning commission about how you want to handle the application.
When would this go in front of, so would this go in front of the BCC at the next meeting, or, or the next Newport-Ritchie meeting?
Uh, William, you know what the?
Yes, it's, it's 621 is, is the date. And just also, a, a continuance here would probably throw off the timing of that. And with the July, there's only one board hearing in July, it could push it further back, depending on how the timing works out. So, just keep that in mind as well.
Well, personally, I think, it seems to me like this is being piecemealed, and not very cohesive, and not being, you know, there's a lot of parts to this thing that have not been fully vetted and discussed. I, I feel uncomfortable with it. And you're talking about voting on an ifs and buts. If the county does this, then the applicant will do that. I, I, it's just, to me, it doesn't make any sense to try to put this puzzle together today.
I share your concern, Mr. Chairman. Without it, I'd actually make a, a motion to continue it.
All right. Have a motion to continue?
Can I just make one clarification comment?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I mean, the applicant has a concern with continuance. I don't necessarily have a current concern with a continuance to sort of work out the conditions. However, if you want us to continue it until the county takes that action, that would be a very long continuance. Because what we just heard is that it could be summer, fall before.
October.
October, before we're able to remove this cap on the industrial. So, we need, I think we need to be clear about why we're continuing. If the continuing is to get the Eagle One application before you, to work out the conditions, to let the landowners try to figure out maybe some better alignment of the, of the Vision Road, that probably can be accomplished fairly quickly. But if, if you're wanting to wait till October, that's a different discussion.
And, and to be clear, when, when this was changed from, CPEV a while back was changed originally, it was intended as one large MPUD over the entirety of it. When, when the decision was made to allow multiple MPDs to come in independently, it kind of created the situation where you're never really going to have the complete picture at one time. We'd have to work with the information we have and, and build off of each piece. So, I don't know that you'll have the level of clarity that you want by waiting too long. Like David said, you can certainly.
My biggest, my biggest concern is that there's a promise to do something if something else happens. You know, that's, doesn't, that wouldn't give me a lot of comfort.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, though, in response to fairness of the applicant, is that's not in the applicant's control. I mean, that, if you want, I can yell at planning for taking too long to do it, but the board told staff to do this. I mean, I don't want to underestimate, they, the board already directed staff to remove this cap on industrial and CPEV. One could argue, staff should have already taken it to the board, okay? And that they're slow. Okay, but if you want me to yell at staff, I'll do that. But that's not the applicant's fault, that, that staff has not done with the board direct, that, I can pull the tape for you. Our board was very clear that they wanted the cap on industrial and CPEV removed. And so, I'm not sure you want to hold up an industrial project, because our staff has failed to do that. I'm just being trying.
Go ahead. I would like to make a comment based in that, honestly, we need industrial parks in this town, more than anything, more than any type of construction that we have right now. Hold these for a long time, in my opinion, is not the way. I think we need to approve these with conditions today to keep this moving. That is my position.
Well, I'm thinking that, I'm not talking about necessarily delaying it until October. I think the owner of the adjoining property hasn't had enough time to review what this application, the, the Vision Road, the, the, you know, the turnback of the 200,000 square feet. I think all there's, it needs to be at least a meeting of the minds. And if you, and if you, David, if you say that the county has given directive to return 200,000 square feet, I, I'm okay with that, you know, as long as you feel comfortable with it.
Well, but to be clear, the condition would say, they have to return 200,000 once the board removes the cap. What I'm saying is, the Board of County Commissioners has already told the planning department to remove the cap. The fact that it hasn't been done is, I'm just being honest with you, is not the applicant's fault.
All right.
It's, it's, our staff hasn't done it. I mean, I'm just being honest with you. So, and now they're overloaded, I'm not, they've got a lot going on, but it just hasn't been done. So, I'm not sure it's fair to the applicant that staff hasn't done what the board told them to do.
Well, that's why we're trying to be fair to all parties and give them.
May I ask a procedural question?
Excuse me, I'm talking right now.
Okay, I just wanted to ask a procedural question.
Yeah, I'll let you ask, just one second. Is, to give them time, at least 30 days, to have an opportunity to get together and come to an agreement on these things.
If, if, if it's 30 days, or whatever the next planning commission, whatever that is, if, if you want to continue, that's why I said, if the continuance is just to fix the conditions to mirror what we talked about today, and to maybe get them to work out the roadway alignment, that probably could be done fairly quickly. If you're expecting the land use amendment that the board directed to be done in the next 30 days, that's not going to happen. That's what I wanted to be, that's not gonna happen until October sometime. And so, there will be an if-then condition. There will be a condition that says, if the board takes that future action, 200,000 is gonna be returned to the pot. But, again, I'm, it's rare that I stand up here and try to defend applicants so vigorously, but in this case, I really think it's not their fault, that the board hasn't removed the cap.
I'm not blaming them, I'm not even blaming staff. They're overloaded, we all know that. What, and I agree, and I agree with, with what you said, that we need industrial development, but we don't need it at the expense of ruining somebody else's property. So, I think 30 days to come to some kind of amicable agreement is not unreasonable.
I, I should have clarified my request on the continuance, because it's, it's exactly what you're saying, David. I think there's gotta be more coordination between the, the landowners, obviously, on the Vision Road. I think that the conditions can be cleaned up on that time, and I'm not, I wasn't guessing that we continue it until October, when, when that's confirmed. I'm, I'm taking more of a 30-day opportunity for them to coordinate more amongst the landowners, more than anything, as far as the, the connection point of that Vision Road.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Go ahead.
Obviously, I know from, from day one, anytime, anything on CPEV comes here, I, I always ask the same question about, you know, what's in the pot, who's entitled to what, and all those, you know, kind of clarification issues. And, and from what I understand, that's all gonna be worked out, and I think that the support commercial stuff will get worked out. My biggest concern here is the alignment of that road. I mean, we're, we're not talking about an interconnect of a driveway. I mean, we're talking about a Vision Road that goes through a big piece of property that's very important. I mean, it's not gonna be easy for adjacent property owners to work together. I mean, there's gonna be differences of opinion. But you guys all got, I mean, you, you guys all joined together and got some benefit from C, from CPEV, and you're getting benefit of entitlements. My, my question, and David or staff, I don't know, as far as citing for other Vision Roads, when Vision Road citing's done, are there transportation folks from the county, I'm assuming, that are involved in that process, and are they involved in that process here?
So, let me try to answer, and then Brad can weigh in. Yes, the answer is yes. But I would say that our transportation staff is mostly looking at it from a movement of traffic for, for vehicles perspective, not, is it potentially adversely, adversely impacting the developability of somebody's land? Am I making sense? So.
Yeah.
They may say, well, this transportation will stop, it's still an east-west road, it's still relieving State Route 52 and Aaron Cut Off. So, they'll say, it still provides the benefit that it was intended, whether it's on the southern boundary or the middle boundary. So, that's what I think transportation staff is looking at. They're not looking at, and Brad, tell me if I'm wrong, I mean, that's.
No, that's actually exactly what I was gonna say. We, we look at the, the functioning of the roadway, more so than the potential of which entitlements would be going on next door.
Well, I mean, that, that kind of leads in, this is gonna be hard, but I'll, I'll give it a shot to explain. But my, my concern, even in looking at the map and the alignment that's shown, and, and granted, this comes down to scale of the map, I'm sure. But the geometry of that trough of the road to cross through the wetland troubles me. And they're talking about moving that connection point further north, which is gonna make that bend even worse to get through the wetland. So, I, I, I think that needs to be worked out, because I think that plays a pretty critical role here in, in the planning and, and the future development of this whole area of the county.
Yeah, I actually was thinking it'd be better to move it further south.
South. I mean, I, to me, I thought that it made more sense to the, on the south side of the wetland that straddles the property line. But, I mean, again, it's, you know, we're talking about alignments, and I think that's all stuff that needs to be worked out before we approve this.
All right. I'm sorry? Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, sir, the, the problem is, is that he asked for public comment, and she's already had a rebuttal to the comment. Where, where, did you, did you not? I understand that, but he, but he asked for public comment previously. Why did you not get up previously?
I tried.
It, it's up to the chair, and, but you're gonna have to give her rebuttal again, if, if you let.
All right, well, just, just be, just be as brief as possible, give your name and address.
My name's Kyle, 601 South, Tampa, Florida, 33609. I'm Andy's neighbor. My main concern is that road. It looks like it's going right through my residence. I have a house out there. I plan on raising a family there. So, that is my, my most main, important subject of this whole matter. As for the trees, you know, it's, it's beautiful out there, and I want to keep it as pristine as I can in my power. I understand progress is progress, but the, the road is gonna be my main concern. And right now, it looks like it's going right through my house.
Sir, can you confirm on that map where you're, generally where your property is?
Yeah, I'm, my property's right here. My house is right there.
Thank you.
Kyle, K-Y-L-E, P-U-P-E-L-O, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kyle. All right. Thank you, Kyle.
Mr. Chair, for just a second, I do want to mention that Mr. Maggard, who is the representative of Mr. Scaglione, has, has his hand, hand raised. He wants to speak.
Okay.
Then let him speak before Cynthia so she can rebut call at once.
All right. Okay, Mr. Maggard.
I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for not being there in person. Mr. Scaglione kind of beat around the bush, but my wife and I and my children have COVID-19, so we are quarantining. So I appreciate the ability to attend remotely. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Scaglione said with, with regards to the timeline and, and the road. And, and I think we can probably work something out between the developer and my client. We just need some time. I think it being a conceptual plan, I don't think sits well with me. I think, I agree if it's on a PU, MPUD, then that's what the county assumes is going to happen. So we would reinstate our request for a continuance for at least 30 days to try to work out that road alignment issue. I, I know that the public comment has passed. I've had my hand up for a little while. I just couldn't figure out how to get your attention otherwise. So I apologize for the late, late comments, but thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maggard. Okay, I guess it's your turn finally.
Thank you. Sorry. Cynthia Spidell again, 401 East Jackson Street, Sterns Weaver for the record. So two things, I feel like we're being a little penalized for coming in first and trying to entertain an engineered alignment. Any landowner, if you want your entitlements and your share of the entitlements, you want to set an alignment, you can come in with an MPUD rezoning and, and work it out with staff. That's what we've done. Second of all, can we, my procedural question was, can we proceed if you were to, to vote on it? Can we still keep our board date? Because I would rather you vote it down and me keep my board date than a continuance. Thank you. And, because I think we can work out these issues with, with staff pretty quickly and get a revised and keep our board date. So I, we would officially object to the continuance and then proceed forward with a planning commission denial if that's an option.
All right.
So just to give some feedback on the timeline of that, if, if it is indeed a minimum of 30 days that was requested, that actually makes us miss the June 16th planning commission meeting and would push us to a July planning commission meeting and an August board meeting. And the next July in Newport Ritchie is July 21st. So that would be almost two months.
So what's the, what's the planning commission meeting after the 16th?
That's it. There's only the second, June 2nd and June 16th. And then they go to July. There's July 7th in Dade City and July 21st in Newport Ritchie.
So if it was continued to June 2nd, what board meeting would they make?
It could go in July.
It would be July, July 12th. The problem with June 2nd is that that is essentially 10 days, 12 days from now. I don't know if that's enough time or what needs to be done.
What, what about the 16th?
They'd miss the board date.
They missed the July board date. It would go.
So the only continuance we could do that causes them to not miss their board date would be June 2nd.
Which, which is not 30 days. That's like 10 to 12 days.
Okay.
Plus a holiday weekend.
All right. Well, we have a motion to continue. Do we have a second on the motion?
Well, you need to be clear to what date. What is the motion?
He said 30 days.
Oh, okay.
You want to say June 16th, Chris?
Hold on one second.
Is there a reason why it has to be in Newport Ritchie? I mean, I know you asked about June 7th.
No, there's no, it doesn't. It could be to Dade City. In fact, this is pretty much in the middle of the county. So.
What is the Dade City date?
June 2nd.
Uh, the Dade City dates are June 2nd or July 7th. June 2nd is, is not very long from today.
Yeah.
So I don't think that gives enough time for what's being asked.
Now, I will say that June 2nd is probably enough days to craft the three or four conditions that we talked about today.
Correct. Except the, and agreed upon alignment would be an issue in that amount of time, more than likely.
All right. So is June 16th enough time?
I think, yeah, I think that we can, we can ensure that a meeting occurs. To the extent that they come to an agreement on an alignment in that time, I don't know. But we can, we can make sure the meeting is held and bring it back with whatever information comes out of that meeting.
All right. Chris?
Yeah, okay. I was supposed to want to make continuance to June 16th. You know, I, I echo what both Roberto and Jamie said. I think, you know, this is a hugely important project for the county moving forward. I agree with the industrial being needed, but again, I think there's got to be more coordination between the, the landowner. So I, we'll specify the continuance to the June 16th meeting.
Brad, can I get confirmation that you'll have the Eagle One non substantial amendment approved before it comes back to the planning commission?
We intend to have that. If for some reason it's not approved, we can at least include the draft. We, we aren't aware of any objections to it.
Well, to be fair, it's not really noticed that well.
Correct.
So.
It's a, it's a non substantial modification. So it's, we're not anticipating any major issues with it. So we can either have a, a very reasonably accurate draft or the actual approved document by then.
All right.
Did anybody clarify Cynthia's question?
Which one?
So, so the answer, the answer is that you're under no legal obligation to do what the applicant requested. You, if you, if you want to continue it, that's within your purview. Or you could deny it. That's within your purview. Or approve it with conditions. That's, all those things are within your purview.
Right, right now we have a motion on the floor. And I'm, do we have a second to that motion?
Well, I guess, just, just to clarify, if we continue, the planning commission has, comes back to the planning commission.
Right.
If we deny, it goes to the board?
It still would go to the board if you deny. And then it would be up to staff and the applicant to try to formulate. Well, then you can't really condition your denial. That's the issue. So, so I guess staff and the applicant would have to figure out a way that they could maybe modify the conditions to make it more palatable for the board.
Okay. As a chairman, can I second?
The chairman can second, yes.
Then I do. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
I mean, again, the, the difficulty is, I, I, I completely agree that it's, I mean, I think that coordination and that connection and that roadway is vitally important. I mean, I mean, the problem is, is I know the applicant requested, they requested denial, the continuance and the denial of this thing so they can stay on the board. I mean, if.
Well, we had a motion on the floor, so we have to follow through.
I understand, I understand. I'm just, before I vote, I'm just, that's why I was.
So before you vote, let me ask David, is this something I vote on?
I think I need to.
Well, yeah.
Um, I don't, well, there's no residential.
Well, that's why I asked that question.
In the project. And I don't think any of these roads access the proposed school site, right?
Well, we don't officially have one yet. So.
So that's a little speculative to say that it accesses a school site. So my answer would be no.
And that's kind of where I was thinking, but I wanted to, I, I see how this is going, so I just want to make sure.
The answer is no. You don't vote.
Okay, all right.
You probably are relieved you don't vote.
Well, that remains to be seen.
Well, I, I take that back. You do vote to break ties.
Correct. That's why.
Okay.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Nay.
There's a tie.
Okay, there you go, Chris. You're going to vote to break the tie.
So all vote aye.
Okay. So the motion carries.
So it's June 16th?
Yep.
June 16th. And we will also have to do a continuance for the board meeting that's related to the prior date. So that'll push the board meeting further back into July, I believe, if we can get it there.
Okay. Anything further? We'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Third, fourth, fifth.